Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone for to come to our council meeting tonight. We have special swearing in ceremony. I hope that's why everyone's here. So will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Farmer?
Here.
Henning?
Here.
Gorman?
Here.
Merkel?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Bachman?
Here.
And Stevens?
Here. So we have two council members that are being sworn in tonight that are reelected, and we have a brand-new council member being sworn in tonight. So I think we'll just go ahead and get started with, um, yeah, let's just do one at a time. Kenny, you go first. Judge Ellis? Hi. Thanks for coming. Congratulations, sir. Mr. Gorman. Can't just do one. Congratulations, sir. Ryan, before you go up, would you introduce your, um, your guest?
Sure. I have the honor and privilege of being sworn in tonight by Representative Bernie Willis. He's a state legislator for Springfield and Clark County, and he is one of my Air Force Academy classmates. So, you know, the first time needs to be a special one, so I asked him to do the honors, and he agreed. So let's get to it.
All right. That was good. Thank you. Thanks for the folks that traveled to come swear in also. We appreciate both of you, and I know you came, both came some distance.
And Mayor, I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance. I forgot to announce, um, Judge Elizabeth Ellis, who swore in, Council Member, Council Member Gorman and myself, uh, Judge Ellis is a Montgomery County Common Police Judge. So thank you for coming up and swearing us in also.
Thank you. Okay, next thing on our agenda is the clerk's report.
You have before you the council meeting minutes of December 18th, 2023.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve the report as written by Mr. Gorman, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Abstain.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Farmer?
Abstain.
Henning?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Bachman?
Yes.
And Stevens?
Yes. And let the record show that that's unanimous with one abstention. We have on our agenda, um, one item of old business, and I'm going to move that we table that. Uh, it was actually tabled at the last meeting, and, uh, it had to do with, um, the Bellisarella
Do we have to retable it if it was tabled? It's never been brought off the table.
I would vote to retable it until the next meeting, just so we have the record clear.
Okay.
I've, I've. The motion.
I'd table it in the second.
Okay. It's been properly motioned and seconded, so we'll vote to table that. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that that is unanimous.
Mayor, before we move into new business, I have a request, and that is, uh, for a motion, uh, second and vote to add resolution R-012409 to the, uh, end of the agenda. That's a resolution to elect a vice mayor and president pro temp.
I move to add that to the agenda.
Second.
Motion to add a resolution to the agenda by Mr. Henning, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
And I will move to nominate Mr. Gorman as vice mayor.
Second.
Wait. We're going to read it at the end of the agenda. It's the last one.
Okay, so, um, we're going under new business. Um, we have several resolutions, and a lot of these resolutions are things that we do every year to reappoint people to boards, um, that, um, are mostly our council, um, and a few residents serve. So will you read the first resolution, please?
Resolution R-012401, a resolution establishing rates and fees at Meadowbrook at Clayton for the year 2024.
Elaine?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, you have before you the proposed rates, uh, for Meadowbrook. We did amend these last year, um, but with looking at the trends as well as, um, what we have done for the facility, um, and our new carts at Meadowbrook, we're looking to, um, reestablish the rates for 2024.
Has anyone had the opportunity to, like, be grandfathered in if they purchased before today?
Yes, and we will, um, these will not go into effect until, uh, the 15th of January. So we will, um, advertise that people can get their, uh, passes there, um, before the 15th at 2023's rate.
If we have email addresses for those who have them, can we send them a message too, or?
Um, yes, yes, we can.
Okay. Just to make sure, I mean, I, if we do it on social media or the website, I just fear a lot of people may not see it, so, knowing the people that I know that golf.
Okay. Yep, we can certainly, um, send emails out. We did get rid of our, um, to save money, we did get rid of our marketing, um, component of our, uh, operating system, but we can do those, I can have staff work on doing those individually.
Are these rates competitive with other cities with golf courses?
Yes, they are, um, especially similar situated facilities, um, like Castle Hills and.
How about on the public courses?
Yes.
We are a public course, right?
That is correct, and that's what, uh, one that we do look to as a very similar course is Castle Hills, which is also public.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve the resolution as written by Mr. Gorman, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that that is unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elaine. And will you read the next resolution, please?
Resolution R-012402, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Kleinger's Group for professional engineering consulting services and at a cost not to exceed $150,000.
Mr. Coons?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Uh, this is just kind of a beginning-of-the-year type of, um, administrative part of the job. Um, as you recall, we have an engineering group that does our engineering services for the city. Um, last year about, around springtime, we switched to the Kleinger's Group after our previous engineer wasn't really fulfilling, uh, the scope of work as we saw was best for the city. Um, so this year, the contract is similar to what the contract was for the Kleinger's Group. Um, they have, it is a slight increase, uh, for, for the services, obviously due to inflation. Most of the costs associated with engineering, um, gets passed through to developers and project and users, what have you. Um, that's part of our zoning fee schedule, so the, the city takes on very little of the engineering costs that, that is associated with different projects throughout the city, but we do have this contract, and this, um, those costs do, like I said, normally gets passed along to the developer and builders.
Any questions or discussions on this?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Jack, I have a question. Are these engineers available to address general, um, issues across the city beyond development? So if we had a water drainage problem somewhere, to give advice on how to address that?
So if there is a drainage issue that's in the public right-of-way, that's, you know, on city-owned property, it is something that we could engage with the engineers, um, on. If there's an issue on private property, that's not something that, uh, that this engineering group would, uh, would, would look at. Um, this is just for public projects and what have you.
Sir?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve the resolution as written by Mr. Gorman, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Let the record show that's unanimous. Will you read the next resolution, please?
Resolution R-012403, a resolution to appoint.
I'll move to nominate Derek Muncie as a member of the Planning Commission.
Second.
It would be a reappointment, um, since he currently serves on there for those who may be interested.
Motion by Mr. Henning to, uh, reappoint Mr. Muncie, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Thank you. And will you read the, uh, fourth resolution, please?
Resolution R-012404, a resolution appointing a member to the Clayton Board of Zoning Appeals for a new five-year term.
I move to appoint Ronald Johnson.
We saw his resume, um, with the Parks Committee. Uh, I will second that motion.
Motion to approve Mr. Johnson for the, um, the BZA Board of Zoning Appeals Board, made by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Henning. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Let the record show that that is unanimous also. Will you read the fifth? Fifth resolution, please?
Resolution R-012405, a resolution to appoint Clayton representatives to the First Suburbs Consortium for the year 2024.
Are we able to nominate ourselves? No. So I will just say, um, Mr. Gorman and myself, um, serve Greg or, Mr. Merkel, are you on there too? Mayor's the alternate. I would be more than glad to continue serving on this committee if you want to share if you would be.
I nominate Kenny and Tim. Can't we all do all three?
Yes.
Kenny, uh, Tim and Greg as alternate. Or Mike.
Mike on the alternate.
Alternate, yes. Excuse me, yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second.
Motion to reappoint, um, all three members of the First Suburbs Consortium for 2024, uh, made by Ms. Kelly and seconded by Mr. Farmer.
Greg, do you want, uh, does it?
Okay.
Meetings are open in the public, so y'all can come.
So Mr. Henning and Mr. Gorman would be the members, and Greg is the alternate on that. Okay. Uh, and it's been, the motion's been made by Ms. Kelly and seconded by Mr. Farmer.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that those three folks will continue serving on that. And, uh, will you read the sixth resolution, please?
Resolution R-012406, a resolution appointing Clayton representatives to the Volunteer Firefighters Dependence Fund Board for the year 2024.
I move to nominate Ms. Kelly and Mr. Farmer to the Volunteer Firefighters Dependence Fund.
And I volunteer as the resident.
We don't do the resident. The other members appoint the resident.
Are you willing to serve? I guess we should ask that question.
I did do my homework on these, so I'm, I'm familiar with it, and I'm willing to do it.
Appreciate it.
I'll second the motion.
Same resident or a different resident?
I was.
Sorry.
The, no, the other members appoint the resident member. So we're just appointing the two council members.
Okay, so the motion has been made by Mr. Gorman and seconded by Mr. Farmer. Is that right? Mr. Henning?
Right.
Wow, I was close. It's on that side of the, it was kind of close.
You use first names.
That's right. So is there, it's been properly motioned and seconded. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Thank you. That's a pretty easy one. Yeah.
None, but that's okay.
Hey, will you read the next resolution, please?
Resolution R-012407, a resolution to appoint a Clayton representative and an alternate to the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission and Transportation Committee for the year 2024.
I want to nominate, uh, Tim Gorman and, and, uh, Mike Stevens for the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission.
Second.
Okay, motion to, um, elect, uh, Tim as the representative and myself as the alternate by Mr. Merkel, and seconded, I think, by Mr. Farmer and Ms. Kelly. So whoever got that?
Neither one.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that's unanimous. Will you read the eighth resolution, please?
Resolution R-012408, a resolution appointing a member to the Cost Recovery Impact Fee Appeals Board.
I nominate Brendan Bachman and, uh, Ryan Farmer for the, uh, Cost Recovery Impact Fee.
Brendan's term is, is it expired? Yeah. Just Brendan needs to be nominated tonight, right?
And Dennis is no longer here. He was filling the other seat.
So can we do that all in one motion still, or?
Would you be willing to do it? Would you?
I'm ready and willing.
So then I'll second that motion for Brendan and, uh, Ryan.
Oh. Okay.
So we'll take, is it an appoint?
Okay. So.
So the motion is that we have Mr. Bachman and Mr. Farmer on the, um, Cost Recovery Impact Fee Appeals Board. It's all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that that's unanimous, and, um, please read the ninth res, and final resolution.
Resolution R-012409, a resolution to elect a vice mayor and president pro tempore.
I move to nominate Mr. Gorman as vice mayor.
Second.
Motion to nominate and retain Mr. Gorman as vice mayor by Mr. Henning, seconded by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Congratulations. That's all the, uh, all the city business that we have tonight. Our next item on our agenda is our city manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, just a few reminders for you. One, that our city offices are closed next Monday, January 15th, in observance of Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Um, the Laura's loft demolition is still on track to be, uh, done by the end of this month, um, so that'll be exciting to have that building gone. You just did the boards and commissions. Um, I'm requesting a work session on January 18th at 6:30 PM for the thoroughfare plan. If you'll recall back in June, council, uh, voted to allow Kleinger's to perform that work for us, so they're going to provide us with an update. Is everyone okay with us advertising for the work session? Great. Um, our trash bids are due on the 12th, so hopefully we will have, um, good bids and have something for you at an upcoming meeting. Um, our contract expires in June of 2024, so we're trying to get out ahead of that. Um, and that is all I have for you this evening, unless you have questions for me.
Any questions or comments?
Is there several bids?
Well, we haven't received any yet, but we've been in contact with, or two trash haulers have contacted us about the bid.
Usually I think we only get two, so.
Did I see a sign up on the buildings down on North Main Street, or is Blade Cutter's going to do the work to tear the buildings down?
Yes.
Jack, is it? Okay. So they're moving forward with it then, Jack?
Yes.
Good.
I know, um, Ms. Immerland was emailed from residents about fireworks on New Year's. She stated that the fire chief, police chief had nothing from dispatch on the record. So, um, I would anticipate having residents come at a future meeting, uh, to share with their experience on New Year's. And I don't know if anybody else had heard anything, but I'd anticipate hearing that again in the near future.
Anything else for the city manager? Okay, thank you. Uh, we're going to have visitors' comments. If anyone wants to make a comment, um, you just, we kind of do it as you raise your hand, and if you want to, uh, no, except for Clayton. We, we can hear him. Uh, but if you want to make a comment, you're, you're free to come up. Uh, we just ask that you state your name and address for the record. Um, anyone? Yeah, oh, great. Thank you. Same to all of you. Okay, hearing nothing, we're going to move forward. Uh, through the council and mayor's comments, um, we'll start with Mr. Farmer. First day on the job.
Mayor and Council, thank you, uh, for your warm welcome. Uh, thank you to all that came out tonight for my swearing in. Memorable moment. This was not on my bucket list, but I'm doing it. And since we will come back after Martin Luther King Day is past, I looked up a Martin Luther King quote that I thought was sort of appropriate. It said, "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter." And I'm here because it matters. The residents of Ward 1, they, uh, they told me it mattered and put me here. So I don't need to talk about my election. I think it spoke for itself, and I serve at the pleasure of the residents of Ward 1, and I hope to have future active engagements with, with the ward and of all of Clayton. So if, uh, you're in Ward 2 or 3, uh, feel free to reach out to me because I'm, I'm here as part of this group that we're supposed to look at for the entire city. So I'll just, uh, I'll leave it at that. Um, well, one last comment I have to say about my, uh, my campaign. I was told I ran a good campaign, but truth be told, my wife ran a great campaign. So. She made sure I, when I did those things, I necessarily didn't want to go out and do, you know? They're just, oh, I gotta, I would knock doors, and, you know, I knocked hundreds of doors in Ward 1. And she was there with half, probably half of them, and I'll tell you that I did get some feedback that made a difference with folks, uh, to have her right there with me. So, um, so thank you. And I will, uh, I'll, I'll leave it at that. Again, thanks for, uh, putting me here, and I hope to, uh, I guess, uh, not let you down. I'll be doing my best, and definitely keep me accountable. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Henning?
I wanted to take a moment and really reflect on the last term to present. And us as a council have really experienced so much, not only on our official side but personal, and it's really crazy to think that January 2020, um, was four years ago, and we were just two months before the start of COVID and the global pandemic. We were six months post the Memorial Day tornadoes that destroyed Trotwood, um, and really hurt, uh, a major part of Ward 1 and Clayton, um, Harrison Township and so many neighboring communities. And our team did a fantastic job navigating that through 2019 and into 2020 as the recovery still continued. Uh, in March of 2020, we also hired Amanda as city manager, and it's crazy to think that you're approaching year four, also of service with us, and you've done a fantastic job, and, uh, we're very appreciative of the work that you've done. The retirement of former city manager Rick Rose happened during the last term. He, um, had worked for the city for many years. He was a great public safety director, and then also did a great job as city manager. So it was hard to see him go, um, but we know that he's enjoying life and retirement. 2021, we were yearning for that normal, um, post-COVID, and students were excited to be back in school, um, maybe not so much today as they went back from winter break. But during COVID, they were really actually anxious to get back to school. At late in 2020, we also had the birth of our son Clayton. Uh, 2021, 2022, we had great developments within the city. Uh, 2023, we had a great goal workshop with city council and staff to go over, uh, plans that we saw for the future of the city. And we're excited to continue to see those plans come to fruition, and then also, um, you know, plan even further out for the future and be ready to lead the city for the residents and provide great services, et cetera. Also, late in 2023, I, or in the mid, early part of 2023, we had the birth of our second son, Henry Henning. And, um, we experienced residents coming to council meetings during the last term, unlike my previous two terms. We had great participation from residents. We had, um, individuals sharing their concerns on what they felt was smart development, and we appreciated that, and I hope that that continues. I hope we continue to hear from residents, and I also hope that the city continues to, um, drive citizens to be more engaged through the use of surveys. Um, we can't just put something on social media. I think with the, uh, quarterly letters that we do for residents, if we could somehow, um, engage residents to participate with, with something, some call to action from that, so we can constantly be, um, seeking their input, it'd be very appreciated. And, um, for this next term, for this, for the next four years, I'm really, really looking forward to, um, the city manager continuing a strong, um, and vibrant culture here in the city of Clayton, not only for staff but for residents. We know that, um, we face some financial, uh, concerns that are extremely important, but I know that with the help of our, uh, finance director Kevin and city manager, they will help navigate the ship through these, um, rougher waters. So I just wanted to thank you all so much for being here tonight, to my family, Mom, Dad, Natalie, Clayton and Henry, we love you, and, um, excited to continue to serve the city of Clayton. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gorman?
Oops. I'd like to, uh, thank Judge Ellis for swearing us in tonight. Um, thank you for coming, Judge. I'd like to welcome Ryan Farmer to the, uh, council. Ryan, we look forward to working with you. And I'd also like to wish, um, Jack Coontz the best of luck in his new position as city manager of Englewood. Jack, you're, you're the, or excuse me, Brookville. You're not quite old enough to Englewood yet. It, but Jack would be the third, um, city manager that has come through Clayton and ended up as a city manager with Rob Anderson and Rick Rose, and now we have, uh, Jack going out into the world beyond Clayton. That's, uh, good luck, Jack. And now we have Jack going out into the world beyond Clayton. That's good luck, Jack. And, and other than that, Mayor, that's all I have to say. Oh, I'd like to wish everybody a Happy New Year also.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Merkel?
I too want to welcome Ryan to the, the DS as far as new things happening and new adventures and new challenges. And the seven of us need to work together as a team. No matter what direction things go, we need to be working together to make the right decisions. Aside from that, I'm going to say, yes, Jack, hate to see you go. And as I said before, you know, when you're in Harrison Township, my comments to Rick were, we've got to get somebody like Jack here to, to do our economic development because at that time, we weren't going anywhere. And you basically got us to the point where we're moving forward. And now we got to find somebody else now to, to pick up the, the pace and move things forward. You left big shoes to fill and want to congratulate you on your new position and wish you well.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Kelly?
Yeah, I'd like to welcome Ryan too as well to council and to the returning council members. Had a pleasure of working with you guys for quite some time now and I'm looking forward to 2024. Jack, I unofficially congratulated you last time, but I'm going to officially congratulate you this time to Brookville City Manager. Brookville is a very lucky city to gain such a talented city manager. You've done such a great job here and we appreciate your service. We appreciate all the staff. Amanda came in, as Kenny said, during the pandemic and she didn't know what she was coming into blindly to that. And I appreciate her and all the staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. Brendan?
Evening, everyone. Happy New Year. Hope everyone had a great holiday season. You know, New Year and we've definitely got an exciting year and also a lot of challenges ahead of us. So, you know, we're jumping right into it, you know, pretty quickly. Only other thing I really have, you know, regarding, you know, Jack, you know, I'd gotten to know you, you know, for, over the past few years here, you're not someone who's doing things just for a legacy. You know, you don't, you didn't do all the work you did so that there'd be a Jack Coontz way somewhere in, in Clayton and you're not, you know, do, not saying you wouldn't like that, but just not the reason you did it and you're not, and the reason you're moving up, you know, to, to where you're going. But, you know, you look at things that have been built, things that are being built and things that are going to be built. You know, we're all a huge part because of you. So, you know, that's, all those things, you know, your name isn't on them. I mean, maybe on some official paperwork form, but really, you know, that, that's your legacy here. But again, that's not why you did it. You did it because, you know, you come in, you, you know, you're going to do a job and you're going to do it, you know, to the best of your ability and to the best to, you know, to who you're serving. So, Brookville is extremely lucky to be getting what, you know, to be getting you. You know, on a personal note, gotten to know you, you know, got to know you pretty quick and you and your wonderful family over the years. How you survived with, with four, yeah, four daughters there. So, but yeah, it's been really wonderful just getting to know you on a personal level and your, your family. So, you know, I definitely hope we keep in touch and, you know, I, I think I can speak for the major, you know, for an overwhelming majority of the community here that, you know, greatly appreciate all the work that you've done on the development side, on all the events there. And, you know, we're going to miss you, but, you know, we know you're not going too far.
Thank you, sir. I don't have too much to add. I, I want to reiterate everything everyone has said. Want to say first of all, Happy New Year to everyone. And I think Kenny touched on the finances of the city. That's going to be our challenge for this year and for the next couple of years. And it's, it's about revenue. It's all about revenue and how we can increase the revenue. I've said it many times up here before, we can't cut our way to prosperity. We have to have money coming into the city and that's in the form of housing, different types of diverse housing and businesses. So, it's going to be, it's, it's our challenge. That's our job for the next few years. It's not a one-year thing that between the council and the staff and the residents that we, you know, we all work together to get that, get, get that flowing like we need to. I also want to say, welcome to Mr. Farmer. We're proud to have you on here and look forward to working with you. You did run a good campaign. I think I've said that to you, but you know, it's a, that's, that's the payoff, you know? So, we appreciate that. I also want to say, just since this is probably Jack's last meeting, I'll prob, may see you before then, but I just want to say, thanks. You did a great job here. And obviously, another city recognized and saw that and I know you'll do a great job up there also. So, with that, I'm going to ask Mr. Gorman to.
I move to adjourn.
To make his motion.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Henning. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And that's unanimous.